This session of the Germantown Municipal School Board Work Session is in session. And we will begin tonight, our first item on the agenda is the annual review revision of policies after first reading of coming from the Department of Academic Advancement. So Ms. Park?
So we have a few policies that just looking through, we want to update and revise, and we want to bring them to you for your review. Some of these revisions that we're requesting are based on the state board policy, the high school policy 2.103, which was just recently revised and has gone through the second reading with the state in October. And then the other is also the uniform grading policy as the state. And then some of the language in here, we just, after meeting with the high school and talking with them, we wanted to clarify and simplify some of our policies because you'll notice a lot of times when we make a revision or request revision on one policy, it's stated that same way in another policy, and it's just kind of redundant, and so then we end up revising three or four policies at once. So we just want to, we'll go through these changes, and we can talk about which ones are which. So this first one, the IP 4.203.1 honors advanced placement dual enrollment and dual credit. You'll see on the back, or on page two, I'm trying to get away from having to change every time we change the state's definition of what we can add as additional percentages to each type of course, to get away from that. So that's why you will see that statement there, starting with line seven deleted. But then you'll also see it's included for the technical courses for the national industry certification. The reason for that is they have changed that category, and you'll see that in the grading policy later. So eventually, I would like to also request that we remove the statement where it says the additional four points will be added, because that's redundant, it's in our grading policy. But I do think it's important because it's new, and it's going to be a big change for us to leave it there just for clarification purposes for at least a year, so we can go back in and revise it later, but for parents and students to be able to see where we are in that policy.
Line two, I think there's an extra A. Student transcript A should be?
Yes, we will take that out. I will take that out and send it, and we'll change it before the board meeting.
Just take off this A, right?
Yeah, we don't have to worry about grammar mistakes, you can always clean up.
We can fix it later, when we send it to TSB.
And so I will explain this addition here when we get to the grading policy in detail. Which is the next one. So IP 4.600, our grading policy. If you will look at the changes here, with the recent change in the state's uniform grading policy with the promotion of early post-secondary opportunities for our students, they are implementing a change for the weighting of those with the GPA calculation. And that change, they didn't do it across the board, because if they did, it would change a lot of class rankings for students. And so the state has said we should implement it with our current freshmen. So, and it's really confusing, as we have to list all of these. So what it means is that if it's an honors course, it has, it will be considered as a 4.5. If it is any type of EPO, whereas you can see before, where we had capstone industry, dual credit, AP dual enrollment, any of those courses that are considered an EPO course receive the full weighting, so an A would be five points. And that comes straight from the grading, uniform grading policy. So I added it here, so it's a, when you see it's effective with the 18, 19 freshman cohort, so it's the same table you'll see here, but it's just, it's verified here.
Quick question, on industry certification, is there certain exams they have to take for those?
It is. And so, we have some students who are freshmen this year who take the AP human geography, and they're not going to be affected, because they're going to get the full points for the AP course, but we do have some freshmen that take Craig Juno's class, and they'll take the Cisco certification at the end of this school year, so it will be effective for those students. And again, the same requirements listed here below that are in the table above. If you are going to get credit for an AP course, you have to sit for the AP exam. Same thing for industry certification, if you take the class but don't take the exam, then you don't get that additional weighting. Okay, the next one is IP 4.602, honor roll awards and class ranking. We revised this, I think it was two years ago. We revised this policy to eliminate the valedictorian salutatorium piece for that year's freshmen, so those students are now sophomores. When we revised it, we put in the actual GPA percentage based on the previous graduating class. And we've talked about this, and we don't want there to be a hard target, because it is a decile. It's the top decile for the class, will receive the highest honors, the second decile, so the top 10 percent, the second 10 percent. Having it in here with a specific GPA based on a graduating class, that might not be the same GPA for the top 10 percent. And so instead of having to go back and review this and change the target for students, wanted to clarify and just say that the deciles.
Transcripts then say like four, and the number of students, or three for the number of students, how would the transcription?
Because we can, we need to do that.
And that'll be something that we can set up, as far as.
I just didn't know how they were going to.
Class rank, yeah, that's something that we'll have to discuss.
I can pull up a transcript right now, but I haven't.
On that same policy, lines 24 and 25 at the first page, are those needed anymore?
Yeah, that's the notes.
I am ready to take them out.
Sixteen, eleven?
Yeah. Line 11 to 11. Eleven would be one as well. So line 24 and line 11.
And we did that when we changed middle school classes for credits.
Yeah, that's actually, what about sixteen?
Section of the 12 is very important.
Let me check. This affecting students that are still here that would be in that cohort?
They're still good. I mean, it's still.
So.
The ranking base. If someone looks back and they don't know that that wasn't.
That are still good guys.
But sixteen and seventeen would be sixteen. So you might have sixteen, seventeen, and twenty-four.
I wanted to check, because we have some students who may have been in that cohort, but may be in the special education program, so I thought I'd ask Ms. Haffman her thoughts on that.
Yes.
You're going to leave them?
I would recommend it this time for us to leave these in here, because it doesn't hurt to have it. Next year, when we can have the set numbers, we can eliminate those classes as we go through. Yep. Just because we don't have the exact number yet.
No change yet.
When I was saying about, I was saying four, I wasn't meaning the ranking, I was meaning referring to the decile. Would you say one for?
Oh, first decile, second decile. I thought you meant, were they number one, two, three, four? Yes, class ranking.
I just realized that you probably thought I said that.
Yes.
So will we show that on there, like one for decile?
Those are going to be preferences of how we can display.
So we can make sure that's in there. Okay, so IP 4.605 graduation requirements. We had several pieces in this policy that actually explained types of diplomas, not, and more of like the state distinction, the honors diploma, and those were better fitting in a different policy, which you'll see is the next one. But I did think it was important, because we didn't have our graduation requirements listed in any of our policies, we just said we follow the state graduation requirements, so I wanted to add those into this policy for quick reference for parents to review. But to take out the Tennessee diploma with honors or distinction, the definition of what state honors is, state distinction, the Germantown Municipal Schools honor diploma, because they will be included in this next policy. So it just was shifting them out of one policy and putting them in another. And then you'll see the statements there added for the special education students, just to clarify what is expected for students graduating in these categories. And some of these are just changing locations of where it's written, or how it's written. So under that section, you'll see where we've had the statement that we're eliminating, we moved it to the very beginning of that section, because it applies to everything underneath that. And then student load, we just changed again, this is just semantics, but changing director of schools to superintendent. Early graduation, this is the move on when ready. And in previous policy, we had achieve a benchmark score, well, that really doesn't define anything to parents, and so we wanted to change that wording to scoring on track or mastery level for a required end of course exam. And the reports they get from the state say whether they are on track or mastery, so it's easily identifiable for those students. And then the very last one, the superintendent shall develop administrative procedures. These are procedures that are required by the state of Tennessee, so there really are, there's no wiggle room. We follow those procedures that the state requires us to follow.
I have a quick question. On the 4.606, we have a two-year academic meeting all requirements, can't complete during the summer, but they can participate in graduation.
Yes.
I'm just curious why we.
That's a change.
Because that's in TCA, and we've not had it there. Okay, so we'll go to this policy. So the IP 4.606 is our next policy, and it's graduation activities. So this is where we moved the definition of what will be honored and recognized, these are required by the state of Tennessee, but also we explained what some of those are. I felt like this was better suited to be in this policy than the other. But that first statement, or you'll see in the first paragraph where we added that, we've had this situation come up, and it's been under the superintendent's discretion, because it said if extenuating circumstances are present, that's, and that we still have that sentence there, but to include this statement that they are within two or fewer credits of meeting all requirements and can complete those within summer school, that helps give weight to, yes, you can participate in the graduation ceremonies, you will not get your diploma unless you complete the required, the requirements during summer school.
That's right. So the actual ceremony is not the real awarding of the diploma, so if they're that close, we'll allow them to walk. It always.
May as always.
Yes.
A lot of phone calls. Okay, and then the final one is the IP 4.701, maintaining test security. So this is where the, we wanted to test and data security. This past year, the state has really made, had a big emphasis on embargo data, who sees embargo data, making sure that every district follows embargo rules. I don't know of a situation where a district has not followed them, but there's obviously a reason for the big push for that. And we've been really diligent about following that, but they have come out and suggested that we add that to our test security policy. And so you'll see there, we just added in the statement at the top, security procedures shall adhere to guidelines issued by the Department of Education, changed the title of this section to testing security, then data security. So embargo data, this is the statement that we agree to every time we log in to the secure application to see any of the data before it's released to the public, that it may be shared with personnel as determined by the superintendent as set forth in procedure. Personnel shall not share embargo data with external parties. Anytime any of the embargo data is shared with principals, we're, he's allowed to do that, but we also get their assurance that they will not share it. So even in-house, we're very strict on that.
And part of that too, is part of the state law, that we have the opportunity to verify data and make sure that it is clean and appropriate when they give it to us, and there aren't any mistakes in that data, so. Is it every year? Not before.
Yeah.
Multiple times.
Yes.
So any questions? Thank you.
The next item is the inter-district open enrollment, 6.2061. And you'll see on the first page, there's some simple strike-throughs of items changing process, rather than mailing and doing everything online. On the back, you will see a proposal to add annual tuition, and then also to consider a limit on the number, percentage of out-of-district enrollment per school, for elementary and middle school.
I tried to do some, I tried to do some preparation for the board to help discuss this, and I sent you some today, I know it was last minute, but I didn't have that request until Sunday night, so we were chasing, trying to get the information that will help you make this. By no means is this a complete and thorough analysis of some implications. So I do have some handouts, Ms. Crowder can show up.
Can you read them?
So some of this you've seen before, most of you've seen before in different presentations, but I think it would be helpful for us to just discuss some of the ramifications and some of the details that we need to discuss. So you should see the cover before, we did our board training, I forget the exact date, I guess it was December, or was it?
It was November 26.
November. So we did our board training, and y'all will also get more detailed information as y'all go through the school finance training for the TSB. But just for general purposes, that's the cover that we had there, and you actually had the actual letter that comes from the county trustee. When we look at the different funding sources that there are for the Shelby County portion of our student funding, they take the different types of taxes. So they're taking property tax, they're taking different pilots, they're taking these taxes, and they're putting it into one big pot of money. They do a prediction based on the beginning of the year, based on your number of students, and then as the year goes on, they look at your attendance, so that's why we say ADA, it's your average daily attendance. And at the end, there's a settling up, they give you a portion of the pie of all the funding that comes from the Shelby County government. So you can see, if you'll go to the next slide, Ms. Crowder, this is also on your same spreadsheet, our current portion of the funding. So you can see that Shelby County Schools, for example, is getting 77.65 percent, Arlington is getting 3.24. We are currently sitting at 4.16 percent of that pot of funding, and that was based on last year's ADA. There's always some change. We could, we're not going to stay at 4.16, we'll get a letter at the end of the year that says you have an adjustment in that funding. But we tried to do some prediction of, what would the change result in? Know that this is a concern for us. We have dramatically been cutting the numbers of non-residents in the district, and there's going to be another big cut of those non-residents, again, based on our capacity, we just don't have the space for those students. We were trying to predict for the board, if everybody in the entire Shelby County system stays the same, and they have the same number of students, but ours goes down, what does that mean for the students who stay? It's not just the money of the students that are leaving, the students who are here, we get less money for them. So you can see that if we drop 100 students, we got a 4.03 percent, and that would be a loss of $545,000. If we lose 200 students, that would be a loss of $838,000. If we lost 300 students, it would be over 1.1 million that we have for those students. Know that this is a concern for us this year, regardless of the changes in this policy, because we are cutting the number of transfers, this is a concern for us when we talk about our funding, and as we go through the budget process. So when you switch to the next slide, and these are all familiar to you, we had trending topics, things that as a board, we need to be concerned about and be aware of as we go through this process. But know that this is a moving target for us, and this is the most up-to-date analysis, if we're opening the school with just one assistant principal, one guidance counselor, you know, we have a new librarian that are going to be at the new school, we have new MAPS teachers that we're hiring for the district, that just opening that new school is going to have an impact on the school. It's going to cost us an additional $2.2 million as a district, so that's something that we are going to have to cut other programs from our budget, or find some way to accommodate this need for increased funding. At the same time, as, and I know we haven't gotten into the change in the policy yet, I'm just telling you things to take into consideration. When we look at the historical non-resident enrollment, y'all have seen this chart too, it's on our webpage, it's looking at the cohorts of students. Like I said, we have cut our non-residents from 1,450 to 795 students. And specifically at the K8 grade bands, like I said, we are cutting those again, and that's why we requested that we change that exit year language in our policy, we just don't have the space to keep all of those non-residents. So if we cut all of those, we would be looking at 229 students from that 79, 795, so we dropped to just over 500 students in the district.
And they're mostly at the high school?
No, if we're talking about the cutting. That's at the K through eight because of capacity, that's if the high school numbers stay the same. So know that just looking at the funding for those 229 students no longer in our district, that's another 2 million that we got to be, we're going to be looking for this money of how can we accommodate this in the budget. So know that's something to take into consideration. Ms. Crowder, if you click to the next one. If you look at, like I said, the students who stay, and we're looking at 229, not only do we lose the money for students who are leaving our district, we lose, we get less money for the kids who stay in our district. So that's a loss of $997,000. So all in, we're talking about next year, our budget, and this budget process is going to be very difficult. We are not short, we're just going to have to look at our programs and our revenue and expenditures of just over $5 million, 5.2 million. So some things to take into consideration as we're talking about this policy, or really get to our next slide. We really wanted to talk about those numbers of non-residents that are in our district. So if we're talking about charging tuition, these are the current numbers of non-residents excluding employee children. So you can see at Dogwood, there are 20 non-residents, at Farmington, there are 12 that are on transfer, at Riverdale, there's 162, because it's K8, Houston Middle School has 32, Houston High School has 386 in that first column. Now if you look at that first column, those are the Shelby County residents, so that means they live in Carrville, or Bartlett, or inner-city Memphis, but they live in Shelby County, but they're not living in Germantown. So that's approximately 300, 612 if you add that first column together. When we look at the number of students who are living out of county, there are three at Riverdale that live out of county, and at Houston High School, there are two, so that's five total that live out of county. We actually have some that come out of state, there are two that are in the honors academy that come out of state, and they pay the full portion, so they pay approximately $8,800 to come to our schools. For the students that are out of county, we do charge those students, and so they're paying that portion, and I think, Mr. Jones, you calculated, you said it's approximately 46?
Forty-four hundred.
Forty-four hundred for those students. So know that one of the things that we need to take into consideration, as y'all are getting ready to discuss this policy, and then I'll turn over y'all to discuss, those numbers that are circled right there are the ones where we're going to see the reductions. We really are talking about, those students may not be in our schools next year now. We talked about the middle school grade band's going to be different, because we haven't changed capacity in the middle school, so I think one of the groups we need to look at specifically are current eighth grade students, or the ones who are going to be in the eighth grade in those schools. So that's something that we're going to look at, allowing those to stay, or trying to, as much as possible to allow those to stay within possibilities. Of the 386 that you see listed in that first column, I wanted to give you the breakdown of how many are in the academies at the high school. So you can see, we have 118 transfer students in the honors academy, 81 in the leadership, and 18 in the fine arts academy. So of those students, 217 are inside of that 386 number, this is an additional on top of that. And then I also thought it would be helpful for y'all to know, and I really appreciate what our staff does as far as promotion of our district. Dr. Simone at the high school works tirelessly to promote the honors academy. I think she was, they had three different school fairs they went to, for optional school fair, private school fair, it was like a school choice fair. I think she went to NDFS this year, promoting our district, recruiting students. I know that just our, that what we do with promotion as far as the community tour day, we do a lot of activities trying to draw students to our school. But that being said, we only had 114 that were denied enrollment to Houston High School. So if we had let everybody in who wanted to come to Houston High School, there would only be an additional 114 students coming to the high school, so, and that's with all those efforts.
Did 114 apply to academies, they just applied?
They just applied. So some of those may have been within some of those academies and denied, but there were 114 denied. And then, of course, there were 29 that showed up long after the fact, who just said, "We didn't apply for a transfer, y'all had a window to apply for a transfer." So we did want to include those, so the total of that would be 143 that actually didn't get in to the high school. So I do think it's important to say, I do think we have a great product. I do think we have a great reputation for our high school, that's why we have so many students that are coming when you look at our different academies. But I do think geography plays a role in people's decision of whether they can bring children to schools or not. So I think there are limits on how much we can pull in, what we can expect as a district to pull in through our non-residents. I think that is something that we are always going to work hard to draw students in, until our numbers hit where we're comfortable, and the levels that we want are important. But know that I think that's misinformation out there, that there's just a line of people waiting to bust down the door. I can tell you the line, it's 143. So I think that's something that y'all need to take into consideration. And then we had questions, I know, that y'all sent to me, if you'll go on to the next slide, just about what is legal for us to charge. So know that we can charge the amount that the city is giving us divided by the ADA, and that number fluctuates, you know, based on our property taxes, and also based on the number of students that we have. But you can see there that it's 2.4 million that the city provides us on top of the funding that we already get from the BEP and the Shelby County funds. And that equates to $411 per student that we could charge for those people living outside the city of Germantown. If we were taking into account that we're, let's say that we cut all of those K8 non-residents that are sitting in our schools right now, we would be looking next year at 390 high school, just same numbers this year, it'll change, 390 high school transfers times 411. So just to predict the amount of money that we could generate through this policy change would be $160,000 that we could make through this process. If we allowed all those current non-residents who are sitting at Riverdale, who are sitting at Dogwood and Farmington to stay, all the non-residents here, the most that we could make from those, that was 612 students, if you remember looking at that chart, would be $251,000 that we could generate from that non-city number. Now, like I said, we already charge for people who live outside of the county, we already charge for those individuals who are outside of the state, those two people who are outside of the state, so that money is already included in our revenue stream, we already have that money accounted for. So the only additional revenue that we could generate through this would be these figures right here. Unless the board decided to change the numbers, or we have more or less students decide to apply, this is what we could generate.
Why are you bringing this to us now?
I'm not.
Then, well.
I wanted us to have a full conversation about what the implications would be, and also to discuss the, if we're going to, because the inter-district transfer students got a letter that said, "You will not have a place in our district except at Forest Hill Elementary." If we put all of the students that aren't going to go anywhere but Forest Hill, at Forest Hill half, the Forest Hill population will be transfer students. And so I want us to discuss whether that's what we want to have happen or not.
Well, it's my understanding we were filling the grave, has that changed?
For us, our purposes, not necessarily to fill the grave, but yes, was to offer those people who are on transfers an opportunity. was to offer those people who are on transfers an opportunity, so I do want to clarify, an opportunity to apply for a transfer to our school, to Forest Hill Elementary School. That doesn't mean they're going to be granted that transfer. They have the opportunity to apply because once again, based on our policies, we have to go through the intra-district, so residents who want to apply to Forest Hill have first priority and then we move to the ones who are currently attending our schools that are on transfer. So we did want to offer that option for families, but I know that we are all concerned. We don't want a school of non-residents that is something that, we want to make sure that we have a balance. And the board has expressed that and I've expressed that. So for us, we, I think right now, the number is 86 students who potentially could, because we did have some withdrawal. We have 86 students that fit that category that could, through the K-5 grade band, get the opportunity. So it does not fill up the gray bands. It gets us a little closer, a little more room to have flexibility, but you're really just talking about limited numbers of students.
Well, so that really kind of explains part of this, but not completely all of it. Plus, I guess I was confused when I got it because we don't, this was nothing we had seen before and so the assumption was, the way it was written in here, that it came from the administration. And you're saying that we-
I brought it to the conversation, the conversation.
No, and that's, but we just never presented that like this before when we had the conversation. I mean, we discussed it at a work session, but not printed in the policy prior to the board being able to have a discussion of what we would like to see in policy, this policy change. Does that make sense?
I think it's good though to see how, how it might look in policy as opposed to just in a separate chief of labor. I will also say that I also asked Ms. Leader to include this in the agenda. I think it's worth a discussion. We haven't had a discussion on tuition since the inception of the district. And, and I will also say that that discussion at the beginning of the district was kind of rocky. So when we're looking at it now, we were in a different place, we had a different status. I know two years ago, when I was campaigning, there were a lot of assumptions out there that we were already charging tuition. And it was open for a lot of people, but we were not. I, I also think there was some cleaning up that needed to be done. When you look at current policy, out-of-county students are, are already charged in tuition, correct? That is not a change?
That's correct.
Right. There are no, there were no exceptions listed in our current policy. I think we need an exemption for our, our employees at Germantown Elementary Schools and I think it needs to be listed in policy simply because I think for the superintendent's safe, not safety, for his guidance, so that it's not on him to be determining who is exempted, who isn't, but policy states, don't tell me this whole school employees-
I have no problem with any of this.
And I think as we're right sizing the district, this is a good time to discuss.
Absolutely.
It's a good time. My whole thing was just the way-
Well, the way it was presented.
The way it was presented. And I thought it really was a, I was impressed that we haven't done this before. So that was, that was my bigger concern. I mean, it's one of my concerns. But it is the right time to, because we are right sizing the district and-
The, the one concern I have, I think it's a valuable discussion for us to have. I, I do think it's important for us to talk about the implications and what it could have. I am concerned about timing though. And I think when I talk to my staff and I talk to Mr. Blaine about the timing, we do have some difficulty. The January 28th, as I sent y'all, that email to y'all today, I was thinking, January 28th is when our portal opens for people to apply for, for open enrollment. I also feel for Dr. Simone, who's, who's been out there recruiting and, and really trying to draw in students. And what she's been telling people is that we currently don't charge fees and you apply this year and we're not charging that fee. It does pose a problem because I, I feel like we should have done this a month ago or, or two months ago when we first discussed this policy because we are so close to this open enrollment window. So for me, that's one of the challenges that we have here is this won't go into second reading until after the application, until February 11th and our, our window's already closed for people to apply. And-
Does it make sense to-
Eight, sorry, yes, but I'm saying the, the next board meeting, I think, is after, is after the, it's the 11th.
I don't know if I could accomplish those ones because we just got this information.
Right.
Now, I'm in the meantime.
Right. No.
And I think there's going to be additional information required, request of potential-
Yes.
Because I think the information that you gave us is helpful.
It's very helpful.
But I don't think it really shows us the impact.
Yes, I agree. This is, this is what we could do in a, a couple of days.
Right. I, I think from a fiscal perspective, we need to see what the impact of this is going to be. I think there are other things we need to discuss, like we quite rightly exempted children of employees, but how is charging tuition going to, how are we going to handle pre-uni- to launch students? How are we going to handle our speds? I mean, I, I just think there are a lot of questions and there are answers right now. Yeah, I think we need to put some consideration to the city of Germantown employees. And how this also affects the academics of the school, will it be an impact? Will it be an effect on programs?
Yes, I-
Those are all the questions?
Yes, and I think we have, we, when we were digging into this process, we had real concerns about the timing because for us, and I've said this before, it's not that I'm opposed to tuition. I am not opposed to tuition. I, I think I am opposed to tuition if we don't have the students to fill our seats at the high school or based on our current funding. I think you're talking about much different scenarios if, if you have a school that is 95% residents or 99% residents. When you have the, I think we're looking at 23% of ours are non-residents at the high school. That changes the, the formula a little bit because we are working so hard to recruit and hit that 1,900 student number. To answer your question, Ms. Fisher, about programs, it, it would have an impact. If we saw students, and we also talked about Carrville students, I think 33% of our transfer students at the high school are Carrville students. If there is a tuition, it could have an impact on their choice to stay. Those students could easily choose to go to their, to their home school because of geography. It's so, it's close to, to where they are. And like I said, there's 114 who are sitting there, but that's not a, that, that's not a lot. So we would have to look at those programs that aren't required by the state or how many years we offer of different programs. Those would be real concerns for us in the, in the district. And it may be anyway because we're reducing num, you, like I opened with, we're already going to see a, a difficult budget process because we're opening the new school. We're decreasing the numbers of, of non-residents at the K-3 grade band. Those are all real financial issues that are coming.
Yeah, that was one of my concerns because we just in December approved the changes that would affect those programs. And we don't yet know what the outcome of that will be. And so it just seemed a bit, and I'm like anyone else, I don't mind talking about it. I think every district has to cross that bridge. But I just think it's a bit premature for me because I don't have all the facts and I don't know how this new, the changes we approved in December are going to affect the district.
So if we, if we took lines 11 through 16 and we postponed those for consideration and set a date for when we're going to come back and discuss that?
So table those?
Table those. At fourth bullet point?
Yes. Oh, it's a, oh, H, yes, yeah.
HD.
Yep.
What would be a reasonable time to come back to?
Yeah, my, my challenge, that's my concern with this is I would- it would be for, it would be for the next school year. So we, I, I would agree that what we, August would be a great time for us to do that. We've got our initial enrollment. We, we were going to see the-
Well, because sometimes our August meetings are earlier than you have the one that was hopefully ready.
So we can say August to September. I don't think we have to set an exact-
I would probably have something so that we know that this is-
September's great.
So other feedback on lines 7 through 10 and then 27 through 29?
I would like to keep the statement, out-of-county students that are children of employees of Germantown Elementary School shall be exempted tuition. That, that wording needs to stay?
I think she said above the 16. Is it above that?
Yes, it's above that. No, I, I asked, is there any discussion about either, so above that or? And then 27 through 29?
I have some questions. I understand the reason. I want to know how that will come down in the strike. How is that going to-
Well, it's sort of like an administrative night ban.
Well, I thought that's more a procedure. That's not a- It is a procedure. It's not a policy.
And I guess what is the concern that I, I mean, really, when you look at this, what is the desired outcome that you want from this?
Not for me, it's the feedback I'm getting from parents who are concerned from the orders that the board sent. That one school in particular would become a school that receives from the board transfers. And they, they really need to, they need the reassurance that we as a board are aware of the situation and that we are not wanting for any one school to be heav, more heavily transfers than others. Now, I know, I know that Mr. Manuel's intent is not that. We've had discussions about that personally, Phil. But if Mr. Manuel looked at us tomorrow and feel like we need to have in policy, this is how we're going to report.
What did it say before?
Nothing. There was nothing.
Well, can you not just say based on optimal learning capacities for a grade band?
Well, if we see- I'll be honest, I, I feel strongly about it because I had children at Germantown Elementary and I stayed at Germantown Elementary and I experienced optional programs. And we had the best parents and the best kids and they were from all over. But it was hard on the school. And it was hard on the students who didn't have children from their neighborhood, who didn't have friends that were nearby that we could get together with. If you have more than one in five children in your class, not that you're going to do it by class, but overall in the school, if half of your class or 30% of your class don't live in your community, then you have issues with parents not being able to be as involved. It's a longer distance to the school for after-school stuff, for night stuff. You can't be as involved in hobbies and, and extracurricular. And socially, you're driving to see one another.
And I understand that, but how many students are coming? How many students?
I, I truly believe because the majority of those students were becoming from Riverdale, these are students who are already in our school. We are currently seeing an 86 would be the maximum. I don't think that's going to be the case. Many of them, their siblings are not getting into the school. When you talk about geography and location, we were actually predicting the number. I think it's going to be 40 to 50 of those 86 students who choose to come across all the, the grade bands.
Between three grade bands?
Between, no K-5, or actually first through, current, yeah, they would be current, no new-
So you're talking five grade bands of 40 children?
So it'd be less than 10 per grade band.
For that school? For that school.
For that coming?
Does that come upon?
The other thing-
I don't think that this is going to affect how many we can let in or not let in. I think it gives reassurance that in the future, we're not going to ever have a, a elementary or middle school that's lopsided.
I still think it's not a policy. I still think it's a person, you know, administrative.
I disagree respectfully.
I'll, I'll tell you, I try to set things up so that if I'm not present, the next person carries out in the same manner from a policy procedure standpoint.
I mean, I don't disagree with this at all. I just, it, it's not a policy, it's more of a procedure. I mean, I don't disagree with it.
Can we say that it would fit better than in the policy? Is there any, if that's a question you'd be certain of?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe so. I don't, I mean, we don't-
It's a personality assurance, which I, I don't have any issue with Mr. Manuel's personality, but I also feel like, I think it's important to, A, let our people know that we're not going to have a school that is not a community school and the, to ensure that in the future that doesn't happen.
I, I mean, I don't have a problem with that. I think it was strictly, it was a longer procedure. It was a policy.
And at the meeting, Mr. Kapowski, we'll be having, those parents have any, I know they're sending questions. I mean, that could be something that he could talk about to assure the, to assure the parents. Because those will be the people who will be attending.
And, and I think that we've talked about this thing. Our goal is not to fill up that school with non-residents. We've talked about how we could utilize that space and we're currently investigating the potential of letting a group run a preschool in open classrooms that would serve our community and also our staff. That's how I think we could use the space, but it would be an MOU that would come before this board.
Yeah, that, that's going to follow this discussion because that's, that's a huge responsibility to kind of have in school.
It would have concerns on our facility, yes. But for us, I want to look at creative ways to provide incentive for our staff and a benefit for our people, not add additional transfers.
May I ask, and this is a, this is a question, but back to the exemption for teachers and other employees of Germantown Elementary School. Is that, this is, this may be a caveat. Mr. Jones, this might be a question for you. When you exempt an employee from a fee like tuition, is that considered compensation? And how does that impact taxation or is that not considered compensation?
I would have to research that, look at the tax rates.
I, I would just be curious about that in the future.
Sure.
Sorry, I just had that a lot more.
Yes.
I know, in a conversation that I have with superintendent and the chairman as well, just trying to understand even in the transfer policy, where we really do lay out very, very detailed parts of what I perceive to be employee benefits.
Yes.
And, and I still wonder, is that the appropriate place for all that language? And, and how that's handled, I'm not sure, but those are some questions that I know I had and, and not anything more than semantics and placement. But okay, like you get hired and we want the top talent and we want somebody to stay here forever. That's our goal, of course. And if they have children in the district and that's the first priority for this and that's the first priority for that, is that really the place for that language? I don't know the answer to that, but I'm asking if that's been considered.
And, and I agree, that's something, when we look at the human resources policy, we would be very open to including that under teacher benefits as one of the things that we're proposing.
If they do that, then we can very adjust even on this.
Yes, yes. We would be very open to that.
I would recommend moving to the next.
Yes.
The next item is GMSD 2018-19 school fee and activity cost second semester. We lived at the first semester and we're coming back, Mr. Jones? Three percent semester.
There were just a couple of changes at Farmington and at Houston Middle only on the activity costs for the second semester. And just to let the new board members know, we do this every semester, each August and January.
I think there was some misinformation out there. I was seeing on the side of the wall, these are fees for this year. I think there was some misinformation out, I was seeing on the cyber world, these are fees for this year. These are not fees for next.
Correct.
That's going to be in August.
Yes.
Staying back because of the misinformation. I might do that during the fourth meeting.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
This year's.
Yes, they're striking. Yeah, important clarification, so the-
Need clarification.
The policy of inter-district open enrollment, the board decided to leave that on the upcoming business agenda. However, they were going to strike lines-
Eleven through sixteen.
Eleven through sixteen, everything else.
Stays. So, it'll be as amended. You want me to change it now, like before the-
Yes, as amended.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Jones?
That's all right.
Thank you. Was this like an addition to the class, the piece class, or was this just going to backfill the topic?
I believe it were, it was additions. Could be a combination of the two, but I, I didn't ask.
Okay, no worries. I was just curious. Thank you.
The next item is this latest disenter eighteen nineteen budget number.
And this is asking the board to appropriate additional funding received from the county commission for capital projects. This is in the bank. Yeah, this is in the bank. And what, what they presented to us was the total allocation that we are to receive, I think seventeen, eighteen. There remains about four hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
And for eighteen, nineteen, about four point eight million.
The challenge we have is that even though it has been appropriated and they have gone to bond for the funding until Shelby County makes their draw for capital improvements. That's when we actually get the dispersment-
Right.
For our capital fundings. So, even though it's just, it's sitting there, so as they draw, we draw. That's why you see.
Right. I think that's it.
Next item is approval of purchase of leak-in active, active towers for Forest Hill Elementary School. Mr. Jones?
Good evening. This is actually a change to the Forest Hill Elementary project. Originally, when we bid this job, what was in the classrooms were, were projectors and whiteboards. The academics and the technology team decided that with the drop in price of interactive TVs, the interactive TVs would be a better way to go. So, that required some electrical changes. Of course, we took all of the projectors and whiteboards out of the project. So, this is actually an expenditure of a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars with personal computer systems. There's a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar credit coming back on the job for taking out all of the projectors and the whiteboard. So, a net difference of about thirty-one thousand dollars, give or take. But that was the direction that the academics and the technology team thought was best for Forest Hill Elementary School. So, we're asking you to approve that.
Okay, so, Mr. Popowski's deal-
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Next item is approval to join NCPA National Water and Water Alliance. Mr. Popowski?
This ties in a little bit to the Promethean issue. One of the contracts that we purchased Promethean equipment from expired at the end of December. This is another avenue for us to purchase those without going out to bid. It's one of the, Promethean's one of the largest technology pieces that we use. It's kind of standardized on most of our instructional levels. But this cooperative is nationwide. It's very large. It has a multitude of vendors that fall under technology, operations, even instruction. So, this would just give us another avenue to make purchases from. Questions?
Thank you.
I looked them up.
Yes.
I was like, all right.
I guess.
Let's work together.
Next item is agreement for design and consulting services at Houston Middle.
So, know that we are moving and, and Mr. Kathy is working diligently, and I'll show this in my superintendent's report. To accomplish all the things in this current fiscal year in capital improvements. It's over forty-three million in capital improvements that we are going to see happen in lots of great projects. The next ones that we know that we need to accomplish is Houston Middle School. We've had capacity issues at our middle school grade band. We've been talking to the city about receiving that additional funding for the Houston Middle School expansion. And we talked about what they need for gym space, classroom space. And so, this starts that design process. So, our recommendation would be to go with A two H for that process. If you've got any other, if there's anything else you want to-
I'm about to say, that was about it.
I didn't tell you thank you first time because I put me, come right back up. Thank you.
Yeah, this is us requesting permission to go ahead and approve and get an agreement in place with A two H so we can begin what we normally do when we do a building. We'll do committee work. We'll get feedback on how many classrooms, whether it's gym, cafeteria, what the needs are. And then we'll go through the program and, and design and, and begin that process. This is us asking your permission to approve that to move forward.
But we, we do not have, no funds.
No.
And if they did approve it, we would not do funds until next year.
Right, that's correct. And, and that's typical of what we've been doing when we have these design projects. We have to pay some out of our, Mr. Kathy's current budget to pay for architect fees. But a lot of those are on the, on the backside, too, once we actually start the construction project. That's part of this, too, is they have a management role in the construction project. So, there, we are seeing some of their fees carried on over once the bond or however they decide to give us that funding is appropriated.
How quickly do you see that coming?
If we can get the agreement in place, then I would say no later than the end of the month, we're going to start, start getting to work on it. I think Mr. Manuel's doing the update on the op-, I think it's mainly focused on operations. Yes, we are busy right now. This is our busy time, but he's going to give you all that information during the superintendent's report.
Is there any further business for this?
Can we get an update by your side, Josh?
Yes, ma'am.
On the field house?
That is coming in the superintendent's report.
Okay, I was just curious on that. I had a question from a parent regarding the principalship at the high school. Is Mr. Taylor the former principal or is he still like a-
As of this-
How is that, how is that affecting what-
As of this time, he is the principal of Houston High School. There, there's not an official interim principal. When you look at the designation, everybody's an at-will employee for the superintendent. We were looking at Mr. Taylor's performance. He's been doing incredible things at the high school at this time. So, it is not my intention at this time to post his position.
I have to tell them that I'm going to D S K paths to primary school, which is developed. I'm not sure, so it's somewhere else we could do a plan. Very good news. I just kind of drove. Sixteen lines is started downtown.
And what, what is the response?
We guess it'll be, it's actually, that's next week.
And I've mentioned to you before, I was invited to, I can start parents meeting for school class, which I'm not best here in the church. But Mary Gibson also attended. I'm looking at how the community can help each other with how we, we do. And I'm very excited about, about the energy we're having in terms of how everything can play community to the city. To what will I be doing?
It's very early stages, but I'll be bringing more information to you as, as it becomes available.
I have a lot of really positive feedback that expressions regarding that topic.
Yes.
Maybe don't even have children directly in, in the schools currently. Also commenting right now and saying that they're still of, of basically evolution of what it's like to be a student these days. And realizing that we're taking that very seriously.
Yes. I think it's good.
Oh, my gosh, you've got thirty minutes.
We can go to the bathroom.
I know. I don't know why they broke, why did they break, why did they break in your truck?